We'll call this meeting to order the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors for July 12, 2022. Roll call, Mr. Peter.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
Chalka.
Here.
White.
Here. Have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions for the day. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda received as proposed or as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
The proposed motion carried. Public comments? Anyone here other than what's on the agenda make any public comments? On line. Seeing none, we'll move on to claims and payments. Mr. Perry?
The total expenditures this week are $502,070.14, of which Sheriff's Department makes up $156,993. Secondary roads, $41,122. We had our library funding for FY23 come out, which is $85,000. And finally, E-911 Service Commission in the amount of $46,681. Everything is normal.
Thank you, James. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called. Hold it. I need a motion in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next, the presentation by, for the fiscal year 22 grant update from Barb Prather with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank. Morning, Barb.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you again for funding us in fiscal year 22. We really appreciate it. And thank you for the support that you've given us all these years to help provide food and grocery products to nonprofit organizations and individuals. Just want to give you an update on the Cedar Valley Food Pantry and what we accomplished this year. We were able to serve over 20,000 unduplicated individuals. Numbers of services for those individuals were over 80,000. In total, we provided over 2.7 million meals to people in need through the pantry this year. I want to share with you a couple stories of people who were served through the pantry. Someone stated in a recent survey conducted, "The pantry really helps, as SNAP doesn't even begin to get as much as I receive." Twenty dollars a month. How can I have enough food for the living on just social security? "The pantry is the only way I have enough food to make. Plus, I have a garden and try to grow my own veggies that I can either freeze or can." In addition, another client shared, "Many are feeling the effects of high grocery and gas prices more than ever this summer." One grateful couple shared with us, "The food we receive from the food bank makes the stress off of our shoulder, takes the stress from our shoulders, and allows us to focus on our bills." So please know that the difference that you make in the lives of the people in Blackhawk County are immense, whether it's, you know, enabling them to pay their rent or utility bill, or whether it's just helping them have enough food to make it through the month. We're here to help. We can't do that without community support, and I'm very appreciative, and the board and staff are very appreciative of the support that you've given us over the years to be able to continue to provide food to people in need. With that, I will answer any questions that you have about the grant we submitted last year and our use of, for the funds.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barb. Next is receipt project updates from department heads and elected officials. Morning, Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. Just a brief date on, update on construction activities. Paving is going well on Grundy Road. They are, should be placing tomorrow and Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, placing the first lift on the rest, the remainder of the road that they weren't able to get accomplished last week due to some of the weather issues. Then on Dubuque Road today and tomorrow, we've hired a contractor to place what we're calling a slurry, seal, on that roadway. If you're familiar with that roadway, we've had quite a bit of tenting where the joints have been popping up. Water gets in there, it freezes in the winter months, and then it elevates the asphalt. It created a terrible ride on that road for many years. Last year, we went in there and milled it off, and this year, we're coming back and placing a seal on it, which should seal up those cracks so water is not able to get back into the cracks and prevent further tenting. So we're, this is the first time we've tried this on our roads in this county, so we're anxious to see how that works. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Mr. Givin?
Morning. Good morning, Board. Rory Givin, Maintenance Superintendent. Just wanted to talk real quickly about last Friday with the courthouse evacuation due to a natural gas leak. Our, our staff was in the mechanical room, and they had noticed a natural gas odor, so then that was expressed over to our office and out of caution, advice from Mid-American, we evacuated the building. What we found out was it was a very small leak on one of the three natural gas lines that feeds our boilers. And the situation was easily remedied by just shutting off that gas line to that particular boiler and then resealing that section of pipe. The evacuation itself went fairly smooth, but again, just as the previous evacuation that we had, the thing that we realized the most was not all of the staff or public were able to hear the evacuation announcement, which is a real concern. So I wanted to share with the board that just recently, with the help of Al and his staff and the maintenance staff, we have looked at two different vendors, looking at two different platforms that would integrate with our phone system. By doing that, that would substantially increase the notification process throughout the building, whether it goes through the individual's phone or through their PC. But the point is, it would, it would reach everybody substantially more than what we have now. Currently, right now, we rely on intercom speakers that are located in the hallways. So if you're in your office with your door shut, it is very difficult to hear. So this is something that's being looked at. It's something that we addressed with, with the ARPA funds under the mass notification section, and so we're hopeful that we'll get this process moving forward quickly. With regards to the actual evacuation itself, approximately 25 minutes, the whole process from start to finish. So Mid-American did reach our facility in a very timely manner, was able to look at the situation, and we were able to identify the leak and get it taken care of quickly. So all in all, I think it was a good, if nothing else, it was a good drill, a good test. And the weather, it wasn't too terribly bad. It was sprinkling a little bit, but it could have been a lot worse. So, any questions?
No, I thought that was great. I was gonna say, response time from Mid-American as well. Like I said, is everybody getting out of the building, so.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
And again, it's one of the nice benefits of being so close to the Sheriff's Department. They were a great help in helping getting folks out. The two officers that are located here within the courthouse went to each floor just to help with that process, to get notification out. So, all in all, I think it went pretty well.
I do have a question. Maybe it's for Grant. It was the incident report. What happens to those? What is the process with those? He completed one and shared it with us. And what's the next step, or what happens with those?
I don't, excuse me. I don't know that there's any formal process. I just, since I'm designated as the incident commander for the building, I just feel it's my responsibility to report to the board afterwards on what I observed.
Oh, appreciate that. It was a great report. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant.
Thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Hey Rory, I have one quick question.
Yes.
You talked about that upgraded system to the phone system?
Yes.
How does, how does that help the public when they're gonna have to still rely off the intercom system?
It's gonna, the idea is that it will go to your employee phones, and so the employees, the expectation would be that if an employee is notified that we need to evacuate, any public that might be at their counter or what have you, then that would be the expectation that the employees will let the public know that they need to evacuate the building.
Does the intercom system, does it work in the elevator or the stairwells?
No, actually, it's just in the hallways, the main hallways themselves. Yep. And another thing, too, I probably should have mentioned, our guard, as I went back and reviewed footage, I was very happy to see that our guard was placed at the entrance of the building, keeping people from trying to re-enter the building during the evacuation, which surprisingly enough, we had quite a few people that were actually trying to re-enter the building. So, and we did write in the post-orders for the guard service to, to do just that, to assist in the evacuation process.
Were there any issues with customers? I mean, did they all evacuate as easily or quickly as possible?
As far as I'm aware, I believe they did, yes. As far as I'm aware, everything went fairly smooth. The correct people got back into the building. You know, we always try to get the Treasurer's Department, for an example, that's a high priority, to get them back into the building before we get any public back in. And that, again, that kind of goes back to the badges as well for that whole process, you know, to make sure that we're letting employees back in before we let the public back in.
But as far as evacuation, that went smoothly, as far as you know, too?
Yep, as far as I'm aware, everything, everybody got, and, and the nice thing, too, about this particular incident, it was on a Friday, so our, our levels of, of folks here at the courthouse were down substantially compared to if it would have been on a Tuesday, for an example. But I think that, all in all, that just heightens the importance that we, we get something improved as far as communication goes throughout the building.
Will that be something the safety coordinator, too, will be working?
Absolutely, absolutely. In fact, I am working with EMS, Mindy Benson, and she has offered up any assistance that we might need to help with this position as far as the emergency management program that we currently have in place. And she brings to the table a lot of experience and a lot of knowledge with that. So we will most definitely be taking her up on that when we get this position filled.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other department heads or elected officials?
I was gonna ask James if he'd do this next week, but I understand you're on vacation next week. I was gonna, is there anything you could update on ARPA or Baker Tilly or just anything in the process?
Yep, I actually sent out an email this morning to the ARP committee, and we received late last week, we received two of the 14 questionnaires back with a full evaluation on them. They looked good. And then the remaining 12 evaluation, or questionnaires that were sent to Baker Tilly, they have a little bit more, more information that they would need. So they would like to set up a meeting with the department head that submitted those to answer those questions before they submit their full evaluation. So, right now, we're just kinda getting, getting a, a meeting set up, and then that way, they can answer their questions, and then we'll move forward with the evaluation. So, the ARPA committee is looking to meet Thursday, and we will, we'll assess those evaluations, get the process, and then essentially just streamline that information to the board.
No, and that's supposed to, we're gonna try to resolve the questions and issues regarding those projects before meeting with Baker Tilly?
Ideally, yes. And then that way, they, they would have, they would have every, every questionnaire completed, and then when they come back to the board, then they'll be able to essentially address those, and then we can hammer out exactly where we are at funding-wise, because some of these, some of these dollars are gonna be, have to shift it from either, you know, an allowable expense under ARPA and shift that over to lost revenue or vice versa. So that's just something that, that I would like to have essentially hammered out and, and figured out. So then when we come to the board with a, with a work session, then we'll know exactly where we're at.
How many dollars we'll be trying to?
Exactly.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
James, are you CC on the board when you send any correspondence out to the ARPA committee?
I did not CC the board, no.
I think you should on any correspondence being sent out. You should at least CC the board so we know what's going on.
Yep, I can do that.
Moving on to minutes approved for July 5, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda by resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on any of the items? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Other business, this is a resolution to approve the request submitted by Summit Locations LLC, which would allow the placement of a two-sided, 320 square feet off-premises signed for advertising purposes at 6121 La Porte Road in a CM Commercial Manufacturing District.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion?
Morning.
Morning, Board. Eric Schrader with the Planning and Zoning Department. This is a little bit different than requests you've seen from the zoning office in the past. As far as I'm aware, this is the first off-premise billboard that's gone through the approval process since I've been here back in 1999. But it is listed in the zoning ordinance for off-premise signs. There's some basic parameters that they have to meet, and then it's provided for that they're allowed upon the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and approval of the Board of Supervisors. So it's a little bit unusual, but this proposed sign does meet all of those requirements. It did receive the recommendation of approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
It looked unanimous. Well, it looked like it was unanimous, too, so.
Yes.
Any other questions? Hearing none. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is a motion that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors authorize and direct the county auditor to cancel outstanding checks through June 30, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Resolution at the request for purchase of capital equipment submitted by Catherine Nicholas, county engineer, be approved direct to territory assigned for same purchase of two 25-ton jacks in the amount of $2,061.58 each, for a total of $4,123.16 from Sadler Power Train, Waterloo, Iowa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathy?
Yeah, these are part of our FY23 budget. They are replacement items. We did budget $2,200 each for a total of $4,400 per county policy, bidding policy. We solicited three quotes. Sadler was our low bid. We would like to request that we be allowed to purchase these items so we can remove our other older floor jacks.
How old are those, Kathy?
We...
Have no idea.
I believe they were like 30 to 40 years old. I, I'm, we weren't entirely sure.
Thank you. Any further questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Chalka?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes, resolution adopted. Next is discussion, possible board action to discuss the cost of uniform rural address markers.
Good morning again, Board. I just wanted to give you a very brief update on the signing, the 911 signing. So as you recall, about five years ago, we worked together with the 911 Board. We had a public meeting. We've got a lot of input from citizens, from those concerned, and it was decided that we would create a fee for our, our address markers, our 911 signs. Prior to that date, back in 2016 or 17, the 911 Board told us, the county, that they would no longer be able to reimburse us for the 911 signs. They had paid for those for at least a decade before that. So that's kind of the history of that. So in 2018, an ordinance was passed that did allow for a fee to be assessed for our residents. It's a $20 fee if the resident is installing it themselves, or a $50 fee if secondary roads installs the sign. And you can see the sign there on, on the photo. Today's signing is a little bit different, but that's the idea. We're, we're trying to notify emergency services of a person's address. We also said four years ago, or five years ago, that we would revisit, I would like to revisit the ordinance if our costs increased. So just briefly, since that time, since 2018, we've received requests for approximately 150 911 signs. You can see the, the breakdown there of the three digits, four digits, five digits. The vast majority of people are installing these signs themselves. They just want to pay the $20 fee and then go home and install it themselves. There is instructions in the ordinance that says where the sign should be placed in relationship to their driveway. Our current sign costs, these numbers come directly from Prison Industries. We are getting our signs still exclusively from Prison Industries. They're back into full production now, as we, as I understand it. You can see those costs that we received the other day from Prison Industries for the four-digit signs and the five-digit signs. The post is another $6.07. So that brings the cost of $20.77 for a four-digit sign, and then a five-digit sign would be $25.67. So that's what we would be, that's what it costs for a person to self-install it themselves, if we just give them the sign. If we are to install the sign, then our costs, of course, wouldn't increase, would include some labor. We figure about 20 minutes for labor. That includes time to order the signs, and then time to go out in the county and install the signs. A lot of times, our sign guy, our sign person is doing a lot of signs at once, so he can get them installed in like 15 minutes out in the field, and then he goes on to the next sign. So I figured that 20 minutes is a reasonable indication of how long his time takes, plus the cost of his vehicle. So you can see we have a breakdown of $49, and then $55 for the four and five-digit signs if we install them. So I'm proposing that we be allowed to increase the cost of the fee that we assess between $55 to $65 for a county-installed option, and then a $25 fee if the homeowner installs it or self-installs. And I know this probably means we need to revisit the ordinance, but I, I wanted to present this information and see what, how you would like to proceed.
Kathy, I had a call on that. Person saw it on the agenda when he was in the courthouse. He had a question. He didn't, I don't know if he got involved in it the last time or not, but basically, he was saying, he, he thinks he has an obligation to pay for the sign itself, but as far as the breakdown for your time for labor and stuff, he said, isn't he already paying for that in taxes? I mean, isn't that their job to do county functions?
Yes, we, I mean, we talked about this when we first passed the ordinance, that I, I can agree with you. This is the only permit or the only thing we charge for in our department are these 911 signs and our oversized overweight permits. So we felt that this was, when the 911 Board stopped paying for the signs, that we would, we would like to be able to recoup some of those costs. I would...
Do you, do you have the, can the seasonal people do that, where the wages aren't quite so high, if you're worried about the cost of labor?
Possibly. I haven't, we haven't really looked into that. Our seasonal person, this summer's been busy. In the past few summers, they've been busy in the engineer's office helping us with some of our asset management needs. I mean, it's really up to the board here, whatever fee you'd like to assess.
You know, I'd like to cover our costs, but when I say that, it sounds funny when I say "our" cost. What's our cost? We're the county. And where's the money come from? It comes from the taxpayers out there. So it, it's kind of a, kind of a tricky spot in a way.
Well, I think, wasn't it brought up, I thought during that discussion, too, that we in town are all responsible for our own house numbers and that type of thing, that expense. So the fact that, you know, we want the first responders to be able to get to the houses, that becomes our responsibility as well as their responsibility. I thought, I remembered something like that.
Yeah, that was definitely brought up when we considered putting the fee in the ordinance, that if you live in the city, you have to affix a number on top of your, or attach that to your home or garage or et cetera.
So this would take an ordinance change?
Mr. Little, it would take an ordinance change because the fees are specified by ordinance right now.
I have a procedural question for Mike. When we change the ordinance, couldn't we, so we can prepare for the future, when we change the fees, couldn't we just include in the ordinance that we simply change the fees for resolutions so we won't have to continually go through three readings?
I can look into that for you. I, I believe it's possible to tie the fees to, you know, some type of an index or cost figure, but it gets a little tricky if you make it too easy to raise fees. And so that's my concern, and that's why I'd like to look further into it.
Because typically, I guess we'd want some input, or we open the door for input, I guess, from residents, but ultimately, it's our decision.
Any other questions?
So are you asking, I guess, just for, to proceed? Is that, is that really as far as to look into it further, to Mike to do his research for you? I, I mean, I myself think with the cost of everything and the considerable cost of everything going up, that that's relatively reasonable, or it's reasonable, I guess. But I don't know what others.
I agree. Bring an ordinance back, a draft, proposed ordinance. I think the fee probably should go up in both cases here. And we can discuss it further, change it, vote it up or vote it down.
Do you have a preference on the, the $55 range, $55 to $65 range for the county-installed sign, or keep it at a minimum of $55, or?
I can't believe they get it done in 20 minutes, to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
That's...
Yeah, sometimes if they're going out on a...
You gotta dig a hole, right?
We, we just use a, it's a green T-post, so.
Pound them down in.
Yeah, pound it.
That still takes time.
You're being fairly conservative, though, as far as on what we're trying to charge. So it's not like we're trying to go...
Yes, I will say that sometimes our sign guy goes out for one sign, and that can take an hour if he has to go to the north or south part of the county, for example.
No, as I mentioned to you, I think, I like the fact that we're trying to be proactive and not wait until the county's losing money, you know, at a large scale or a larger scale, and then addressing it. So I'm, I'm supportive of going for it.
Yeah, a $25 fee as you proposed, and a $60 fee for county installation.
Bring it back, and like Mr. Chalka said, we'll vote it up or vote it down.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
We will proceed that way.
Thank you. Next is discussion, possible board action, funding amount for family and children's councils, community services application.
Well...
You put this on, James?
For opening comments.
I, I asked James to put this on, just so we can proceed, and I'll make a motion that we fund the amount of $5,000 for the family children's council.
$5,000?
$5,000, yep.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
We seconded that, Chris?
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. Moved in second. Any further discussion on this item?
I guess from a discussion, not particularly on this item, I guess is a discussion point. I, I wanted to just, I should probably make this clear before going forward on any of them. I spent a great deal of time yesterday, I know we all have, but I spent a great deal of time yesterday reviewing all of them. Still did not get through some of the supplemental information, and that's on me. But I had some other questions that I wanted to ask. Some of the groups are new to us, obviously. There isn't anyone in the group of the six that don't work, have people that are working hard to do betterment of our community. So there's no question about that. But as I looked at some of the applications and the supplemental information, I had some additional questions. So my, I knew Dan wanted it on for today and wanted to move forward on it, and tried to do my homework and just... and tried to do my homework and just didn't get it all done in time. Um, so, but I, I guess, my question then, or my dilemma for me, was do I vote on the ones that I think I could support now? And then had questions for the others. And I wasn't sure I was being fair to everyone that's involved by doing that, making decisions on some and not on others, when I had, you know, more information I wanted, because it could change the decision, it maybe wouldn't, so...
If you're not in favor of it, you shouldn't vote for it.
Well, so, no, it's not that I'm not in favor, it's, some, some might be that case. I'm not saying I'm not, I'm saying there's some other questions that I had that I would like answered, but not that anybody else needed to, but that I did. So before I made that decision, or what I felt was the amount, too, um, that I was just looking for more information, and not to delay the process, but to say I'm not maybe prepared to vote on those items today, so...
Linda, are you, are you saying that maybe one more week's time would be enough for reviewing?
Uh, no, I would say that, but except that I'm gonna be on some vacation, too, next week, and so I thought that, I don't want to be back next week saying the same thing. That, that's unfair to everyone as well. So, um, I'm not su, I, as much as I'd like to say that, Chris, I'm, I'm not willing to say that I'll be able to contact those individuals and ask those questions. That was all, so I know that really doesn't answer probably, but does and doesn't. It, your answer, your question is, no, I probably wouldn't get it done in a week. So I know, as Craig's mentioned, and I think Dan before, too, if, if it's the will of the board that three individuals want to go forward and vote on it, I guess that's all right. I did want to ask Mike, because I think this complicates things a little bit, was in regard to how we can vote, or how we will vote on some of these. And I think it's putting us at a disadvantage for some of the applicants, possibly, on some of these, but...
And I, and I think you're getting, and correct me if I'm wrong here, Ms. Layland, but I think what you're getting at is conflicts of interest, or potential conflicts of interest.
Yes, I'm sorry, I wasn't, yes, that's it. Because you've mentioned in a couple of our meetings that, as members on boards, that maybe we should recuse ourselves from voting.
Exactly, and I'll, I'll kind of give my overview opinion on conflicts of interest as it relates to these, uh, organizations. So, common law on conflicts of interest seeks to avoid potential conflicts of interest, not simply situations where there's actual, uh, financial hardship, or, or financial or other advantage, uh, that you can prove to an individual supervisor. Uh, the Iowa Attorney General's Office has weighed in on situations where county supervisors also sit on other organizations' boards. Uh, the AG's office opine that, well, obviously, a county supervisor can sit on other boards. Uh, conflicts of interest law still applies as to decisions that involve, specifically, funding of other boards, but also decisions, or other organizations, but also other decisions affecting those organizations. Uh, as a result, it's my recommendation that if one of our supervisors also sits on a board, uh, whether as a voting member or otherwise, of an organization that is being considered for public-purpose funding, uh, it would be best for that supervisor to recuse him or herself from deliberation and voting on, uh, county funding for that organization. And while less, uh, potential for a conflict of interest exists, uh, if a county supervisor is some kind of a member of an organization, uh, because this also came up in conversation about this issue. Uh, so if a county supervisor is also a member of an organization that's being considered for public-purpose funding, uh, while not being on a board, or maybe holding a position within that organization, uh, that supervisor should still consider the potential for conflict of interest when deciding whether to participate, uh, in deliberations and voting on county funding for that organization. Uh, it's important to note that the initial decision on whether a conflict of interest exists is the decision of that supervisor who may have the conflict. Now, I say initial, uh, because there are avenues where, of redress, uh, if a supervisor acts when recusal would have been required or appropriate. Uh, so, it's one of those, eh, kind of, sometimes, some people may characterize it as clear as mud. Um, I think the obvious situation is when the board member has some position within the organization, whether it be an employment position, a position of authority, a board position, something like that. That's an obvious conflict of interest, in my opinion, and, and that should require recusal. Uh, if there is, um, if it's an organization that, say, has paid memberships, that should also be considered. And I say that because, uh, presumably, those paid memberships are, eh, for some type of advantage, uh, to the member. And if the county funding would better that organization, that could improve the advantage gained by that membership. And so that should also be considered as a, a potential conflict of interest. Uh, beyond that, it's, it's one of those case-by-case decisions, and I, I hate using this phrase, but we, we look at whether it passes the smell test. Um, and I, uh, and so, i-if you're wrapped up in an organization that's becoming, that's being considered for, uh, for public funding, probably best to stay out of those deliberations.
Um, that was my question, I guess, when I thought there are probably three of our six that have people on the bo, on their boards.
I used to sit on the board for family children's council, but...
So did I, too.
No, no, and I, I just meant, I think there's three that we have, and I'm not sure, I could be incorrect, like I said, I didn't review those as thoroughly as I was, but I thought possibly that Chris was on two boards, and you were on one. So that reduced those votes, and I just thought, me not making a decision today, or just, you know, ready to discuss them today, makes two people on some of those decisions not participating, so how fair it was to those applicants, that was a concern, um, by doing this. I don't know, um, Chris asked the question if delaying it a week, would, would two weeks be acceptable or, or not? And I don't mean it has to be. If three people are ready to go ahead with moving ahead on this, then I, that's...
Move it to the direction of the board.
I think, um, I'm gonna withdraw my second, um, on the motion that's standing right now. Um, just because, given that, um, there are three organizations here that, um, two of us won't be able to vote on, and one supervisor, uh, Layland's not ready to vote today, I do think it is hard to take, um, um, representative board action on, on these items today. So, um, I would, I would offer a motion to the table for two weeks.
I, uh, I will second Chris's motion.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Moving on to any reports or information from the board. I've got a couple informational situations here. Um, the moving wall is going to be in Sumner, Iowa, on this coming Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. There's gonna be all sorts of events, uh, being held up there. It starts at approximately two o'clock in the afternoon on Thursday, and it goes twenty-four hours a day. It's just like that forty-five-hour deal we have for our Vietnam veterans. And then we got James Bunch Foods Desert Challenge, calling out to one hundred veteran volunteers construct a one-thirty-by-seventy-two seasonal high tunnel system in a food desert, desert community, Waterloo, Iowa. We will invite the Guinness Book of World Records to record this event. It's, uh, being put on by USDA and, um, the church. I'm trying to see where, they, I just got this information last night. Oh, it's gonna be at Antioch Baptist Church is where they're gonna construct it. So anybody that's interested can call the office, and there'll be more information. It's gonna be done Friday, this coming Friday. So anyone that's interested, contact...
Supervisor, white? Uh, what, what time was that?
The construction?
Yeah.
There's no time on it.
Okay, but just all day, Friday, they start?
Well, I suppose they're starting early in the morning if they're gonna get, get it constructed. And they're looking for veterans.
That's a really, that's a really cool project. High tunnels are the future of our agriculture.
Anything else? Any other reports come before us? Moving on to closed session. Oh, I look up and you're all gone already?
Good, almost.
This is a motion to appoint attorney to advise and preside for the Still Service Commission in an employment hearing. So moved?
Second.
So moved. Moved in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Anything else to come before us? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved?
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.